You get to sleep in your house?
What's that?
You get to sleep in your house?
I am. He's, uh, we got him on a new schedule. He goes to bed at seven o'clock now. It's so liberating. I figured either he's getting sleepy or he's that implement person where you get the bags. One of the two is happening. That was it. It's awesome.
So funny.
No, it's the first time we've had evenings to ourselves or no obligations in a year or so. It's like,
Yeah.
It's weird.
Wow.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the regular Monroe Planning Commission meeting, Monday, October ninth, two thousand twenty-three. It is seven P M. Um, Hannah, would you take over for me?
I'd love to. Commissioners present and establishing a quorum. Commissioners Bull, Dawkins, Lewis, Lockhart, Nugent, and Walker.
Commissioner Blair has been excused.
Yes.
Thank you. We have, uh, at this time, we have, um, public comments, um, available. Anyone, um, that has joined us to speak has three minutes. Um, I guess three minutes per speaker. So, what? Three?
I'll really question you.
Who would like to join us first?
I will.
Go ahead and have a seat.
You done?
Yeah, just let us know who you are.
Hey, my name is Lance Smith. I've been a resident of Monroe my whole life.
Okay.
As well as, uh, my family all the way back to my great, great grandfather was a Monroe resident. And my grandkids and my, and my kids all went to school here. So we've been a long history of Monroe. And, uh, my brother and I bought, uh, a roofing company from my uncle, nineteen seventy-six, state roofing company. Nineteen seventy-nine, we formed another company called Smith Brothers LLC. We bought, uh, a pretty good sized piece of property down on the end of, uh, Kelsey Street. Uh, it was known as four thirty-one North Kelsey forever and, uh, and four oh nine North Kelsey has been changed a little bit because of certain, uh, things have happened down there over the last year. And, uh, anyway, so we've been, we've been at that site under the name Smith Brothers, uh, property owner and state roofing, uh, was the tenant uh, for the entire piece of property for forty-three years. And they're, and actually they're still there. The only difference now is that we sold the uh, roofing company in nine, in two thousand and seventeen and, uh, they remained there for five years after that. And then, uh, because we gave them a sweetheart deal on the lease. Uh, but because the owners live in Olympia, they started moving some of their operation to Tacoma, to Tacoma. And so anyway, because of that, uh, they vacated some of the buildings there and, uh, we started, uh, we cleaned it up, cleaned it up a little and started leasing the buildings to other tenants. And, uh, of course, at that time, we ran into the situation where, uh, the, the girl that wanted the, our, uh, sales office, uh, wanted to set up a State Farm agency there. And so, which is, she did and we met. Uh, we didn't realize at the time that, uh, the city had rezoned us because we never received any kind of notice that it had been done. And so that was the first time that we, uh, found that out. And that was in two thousand twenty, late twenty-one or twenty-two, I guess. I guess they rezoned it in seventeen or eighteen, somewhere in that neighborhood. So it was a bit of a shock to us to find out, uh, that, uh, we, we met with Leanne and basically her first comment was, sorry, you're out of luck. You can't do anything anymore because state roofing is moving. And I was a bit shocked with that comment. Uh, I felt that we should be grandfathered in and, and she called me back a few days later and said, well, you know, because it's gonna be a similar type business, which is a sales office, we will allow her to go in. Uh, found out later that unfortunately that we were not able to put up a sign for her, which we were very disappointed. And perhaps she was very disappointed that she couldn't put up a sign. Uh, so far she's remained there. Under those circumstances, she has remained there. She's not happy about it, but she's still making a living out of it. Uh, before that happened, we actually leased out a couple of the other buildings to, uh, a welding company and another metal fabrication company, uh, before we even knew that there was an issue with this whole city thing. And so that, uh, we met with Amy a short time after that. Uh, I think it was over the sign. Trying to talk about the sign. And at that point it came up that, uh, that we were non-conforming. Uh, we were in a non-conforming situation, which, uh, we, uh, she said, well, at, at that time she informed us, we need to let them, let, let her know. If somebody, who else, who else was gonna be coming in there because they wanted to know. So that was her comment. We need to know who else is coming in. So we're going, well, you know, whatever, that's, we can live with that. And, uh, so we, we told her that at that point, there was these other two tenants in there. And that's kind of as far as she went on the, on the subject. Though she said that we do kind of need to know, though. Uh, kind of come up, you know, uh, we, we didn't quite understand the situation. We didn't get a copy of this, this. I just got this about a month ago. The city, uh, which is municipal code, tells us what we can and can't do because my, my attorney reached out to Amy about eight months ago uh, to try to figure out because I'd heard some rumblings from some of the other businesses around town that were also affected by the same thing. That it was very difficult to get moved in. If, if you're non-conforming, it's, it becomes very difficult to deal with the city is what I heard. So my attorney reached out to Amy with an email. I got a copy of it here somewhere that asked her, well, you know, under the situation, what can we? Because we want to know, you know, this is our future. We've been here forty-four years. We'd like to know what we're able to do on our own property after, you know, what we've done. Uh, one of the other subjects, I want to cover real quickly. This is the footprint, kind of a building diagrams of what we've done uh, by city approval over the last forty-four years. We've got, uh, forty-eight hundred square foot of office in there now. We've got sixteen thousand square foot of, uh, warehouse in there right now. We were required to do landscaping, asphalting, curb and sidewalk, uh, two huge underground stormwater retention systems, uh, sloping, um, current estimated values based on some of the guys I talked to just recently, just to get an eye, get a ballpark for this meeting was the roughly three and a half million dollar boost of improvements have been done to the property. So of course, we're pretty frustrated with the idea that after that much money we spent on the place that we can't, we're not allowed to rent it to what we consider a good tenant. We have to have our tenants all pre-approved by the city, which I don't know if anybody here has got a rental, but trying to find a good tenant is difficult enough. And then when you have to have another layer of regulation on top of that, we're worried, we're a bit worried about our investment. We figure that, you know, the piece is currently worth about eight million dollars based on what we're getting on our return to the amount of rent we're getting versus what a financial advisor would estimate your return would be on a piece like that. It's, uh, he estimates it about eight million dollars. And of course, the property is only worth about half that, which means that we scandalous about four million dollars worth of our value, uh, under these situations. Because we're, as we read through the, uh, the rules that I just got, it's pretty scary. And I'm sure everybody's probably heard that, but, but the idea that uh, anybody that moves in there has to go through a hearing body in order to move in, uh, doesn't, doesn't really explain here, of course, what that hearing body is or what they're, they, but the, I guess the scary thing about this, it tells you that the new tenant has to be more, uh, closely aligned with the appropriate new zoning use, which I have no idea what that means. I'd like somebody to explain what that means and how you're gonna come up with that criteria because, uh, at the best of our knowledge, this kind of fits more into, into a light industrial application, which is what we were zoned light industrial when we first moved in there and for, well, I, I, I think there was no zoning, of course, back in the seventies when this, this happened. And of course, it was rezoned or, you know, they come through with a comprehensive plan. They zoned it light industrial. And then, uh, sometime, I think in the late nineties or thereabouts, I don't know for sure, uh, we just had another situation come up where we're doing something. They said, well, by the way, you're rezoned again. And they zoned it commercial. So we've been, uh, living by a commercial zoning requirement for the last twenty-some years, I guess. And when we did the vast majority of this work, we were zoned commercial. And so,
Jay, Jay, point of order. Jay, point of order. Um, I, I, I want to hear from our, our residents, but we, we have a three-minute time limit on public comment and we're approaching six or seven minutes now.
Okay.
You want to follow up?
Well, I'll.
Thanks, Melanie.
Yeah, I, I, I want to hear from what they have to say. So I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I just want to stick with what our rules are.
Yeah, we thought we had more than three minutes when we first had this.
The rules of order are three minutes exactly. So Melanie, would you rather him hand the baton off to one of the other members of the family or can they forfeit their time to him?
I don't, I can't see how many, um, are in the room exactly with the screen. Um, I mean, that, I don't know how you normally do that, Jay. I was just, I,
Usually we have, usually for the public, we have a timer, um, since we've been displaced, since, um, they're doing a renovation, we do not have a timer. Um, so that's usually what happens. If, uh, more than one person wants to speak, they all get three minutes per person. Um, I think it would be, um, totally acceptable if we were to allow one speaker for the, for the four members to, to have twelve minutes total.
I do, I do want Lauren to speak because he's, he's got some input, I think is, is relevant, though. Uh, I think Brad would just, he's gonna, he's gonna reiterate most likely what I would do anyway. So it's up to you.
So we're gonna give you twelve minutes total for the four members of the public that showed up. Acceptable, Melanie?
Yes, if that's the plan, that's fine. I didn't know that ahead of time. So that, that works.
I'm trying to talk as fast as I can.
Yeah, we're, Kate, what are the rules around that, by the way? Is Jay able to use discretion?
Uh, well, technically, well, obviously I have to look at your planning commission rules of order. The, the rule is three per, but if he's willing to give up his three minutes, I don't see a problem with him continuing. I'm fine with that.
So I know the city council, it's always, it's,
Three, 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 three.
They, they, um, so, you know, if you're coming to present, you practice, you got three minutes.
Yeah.
We're a little unofficial right now, too. So, so.
So anyway, uh,
Go ahead.
I, I do want Lauren to speak. You can cut me off before the last three minutes.
Get your request out before the twelve minutes is up or before you move in. So.
I, I do want Lauren to speak, so cut me off, uh, before the last three minutes.
Okay, okay. You've got one more minute.
Okay, uh, anyway, then I'll, I'll make it quickly. I, the, uh, obviously the investment we've made there, I would really would like somebody to review the fact that, uh, we're beside the railroad tracks, not a great place for a, uh, apartment in the first place. The, I lived there for nine years myself at the house. Very annoying that everyone's going by. The intersection of, uh, Blueberry and Kelsey is also a bit of a nightmare. And so adding another hundred apartments in there, I, I think it's just gonna add to congestion in that particular intersection. So it, it does work very well for people there. Uh, Brad and I designed it for this type of application. There's a huge turnaround for large trucks. And that's who we've rented to. Guys, uh, the, the people that are there had a hard time finding a site. In, in fact, yeah, but, uh, none of them said that they could not find a site that allowed for a large truck, pull in, circle around, unload, get right out, fast, easy. That's the way we set it up. The people we're renting to love that. We had no trouble renting it to people because of that reason. And so we're just asking to, you know, take into consideration what we've got there and the investment that we have there and the fact that, you know, it's our, it's our retirement plan to try to keep it this way. And the idea of tearing it all down and putting apartments there would be, you know, devastating load on us.
So it's your desire to,
Either go back to the light industrial zoning, we have,
Commercial or by the,
Excommercial zoning again. That's what we reveal. The, the, the rules, this, this rule seems to be extremely, extremely difficult. I don't see how reading it, I could even have a new renter in based on the fact that the new renter would have to be more appropriate to the, uh, residential zoning than the last tenant. How that would happen is beyond me. I don't see how you could do it. So anyways, thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. Kelsey.
Um, what is it zoned now to? So it was light before, but what did it get changed to residential?
I didn't.
I didn't.
So in, um, although you should just be in comment mode, I will give you the backstory. This was on the comp plan, changed to high-density residential in nineteen ninety-four. However, the zoning did not actually change until two thousand nineteen to the residential. Most recently, it was general commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
For yours.
Go ahead. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. Uh, so I'm really disappointed because I got turned down about the fire engine ride.
There's a bell up there.
I tried. So, uh, I'm a lifelong resident of Monroe, like Lance. I was born in Valley General Hospital in nineteen fifty-two. And I've been friends with Lance and Brad and the Smith family for over forty years. We're next door neighbors.
I'm sorry, I missed your name. Pardon? I missed your name. I'm sorry.
Lauren Lyon.
Lauren Lyon, okay.
And, uh, my, that whole family, so I've here gone through high school and prepared for college and their careers. So I'm a Monroe guy. I care about Monroe. And the reason that Lance asked me to come tonight is to address an issue that I'm pretty familiar with and I think is critical for Monroe. Uh, prior to retiring, I was president and center director of Impact Washington, which is part of the, uh, NIS, the National Institute of Standards and Technology. And we were chartered with helping small, medium-sized businesses in Washington state grow and be successful and retain and add jobs. That's was principally our, uh, charter, creating and retaining jobs in our state and across the country. I testified, uh, to our state legislature and Congress regarding the positive effects of manufacturing for our state. So the Smiths have asked me to come and talk a little bit about how important this is for Monroe because that's what their business is, is helping small businesses operate. Uh, not many people know this, but ninety-nine percent of all American businesses are small and medium-sized. Ninety-nine percent. And they employ about half the workers in our country. So small businesses are really critical. And nearly eighty percent of those companies have twenty or fewer employees. Kind of surprising. A single company like this might have a pretty modest economic effect, but the aggregate is extraordinary. And each of those little companies, a twenty-person company, really is not viable for them to want to build, building and create an environment and the infrastructure for their business. They need an operation like the Smith Brothers to be successful. And, um, it's harder and harder to find those in any place, but certainly it is in Monroe. They, what they have, Smith Brothers have is really an excellent, uh, facility that's been built over the last forty-five years specifically to handle light industrial needs. And as Lance mentioned, millions of dollars have been spent to create the facilities. And currently over fifty employees with them, you know, out of that facility and they're, they rely on these facilities. Their family relies on those facilities for their livelihood.
So Lauren, um, as, as a planning commission, we are tasked with, um, you know, we have to, you know, find as many jobs creation as housing. So we're very focused on both. So your points, um, that we're, we're trying to get across here at the planning commission this evening is job creation or job retention? Okay.
Great. I'm preaching to the choir.
Well, yeah.
Well, we need to time check, so we drop it up.
Great, that's helpful.
So if you could, um, if you wouldn't mind just wrapping it up.
Sure, sure. So, uh, mostly what I want to talk about is the ripple effect of all of that, particularly for manufacturing. And uh, I just want to share one thing. So fifty employees might not sound like a lot. Uh, recently, I think three weeks ago in the Wall Street Journal, there was an article about Santa Rosa. Being very excited about bringing a helicopter company to town with a point fifty people. Because the ripple effect of, on manufacturing jobs is huge. Um, I think we have an opportunity to retain a model that's similar to that. Fifty jobs now. I mean, over the, the lifetime of state roofing, at one time they had a hundred and fifty employees. Over the, the forty years that they were there, thousand or more employees. And this company has, uh, continues to have that opportunity. So I think there's a great reason to retain what they have done, the same kind of work that they've done in that site and, uh, keep jobs in the mall.
Sure. And that, that follows, um, with the request to be zoned to commercial and light industrial.
Right.
Exactly. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. And just got your in line.
We do have one person in the lobby. Don't know if they want to comment.
Slime.
If you are tuning in online and you'd like to submit public comment, you can just raise your hand and I'll give you the ability to speak. No?
Good. All right. We move on to next order of business, which is approval of minutes from, um, September eleventh. That was our joint planning commission meeting with, uh, community human services advisory board. Do we have any edits, comments? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Kelsey.
I vote to approve that minute.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Is that Mr. Lockhart? Thanks, Melanie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All hands. No opposed. So we're good. Okay. Kate, um, old business is, uh,
I'm back.
Good to see you.
Yeah. Um, so I, I am returning, uh, with what we heard regarding equity. And so I am hoping that after our conversation tonight or the next night, we can come up with something that we can forward to, uh, the city council. In your packet, I've included the original definition and screening, uh, process and questions that were to be used, uh, that were recommended by the planning commission. Following that, it went to, um, two advisory boards as well as, uh, an internal advisory board. And so if you're following along on page eight, you start seeing some of the recommended changes. So Chisav had recommended, um, so first, um, there were some edits included by staff, uh, and this was, uh, executive leadership and the mayor. So they gave their comments. And those comments were added when Lance took it to Chisav. And so those are the underlying. Then the yellow on page, uh, eight identifies areas that Chisav had some comments or concerns. And so the first one was um, that gender preference. They would rather see the word sexual orientation. It's, it is, um, sexual orientation has a very finite definition. And they felt that gender preference wasn't getting there. You guys hearing me okay? Yes, okay. Um, the next one was the concern that to facilitate access to resources, opportunities and representation and planning and decision-making process. Um, they were concerned that, hold on here, I gotta find my notes again. Um, it was a statement. And so, um, who did? Hold on, I'm sorry. Should have read this more. Statement. Oh, it didn't actually get to resolve. And so what was the recommendation? Oh, no, that's satisfied. So I'm just kind of following on. So that statement where it is equity is the principle in which we, the whole sentence is equity is the principle in which institutions proactively adopt policies to take genuine action to eliminate inequitable adverse impacts and to facilitate access to resources, opportunities and representation and planning and decision-making. You know what? I'm honestly not sure why we highlighted this one. My apologies. Okay, no, no, no. Got that. Satisfy I knew was to be changed in the definition. Can't read the funding commission's definition in reverse statement. Oh, okay. No? Oh my goodness, I knew this before seven o'clock tonight.
It's from so much discussion.
I know. It's just, it kind of, we've had a lot. Right. I just got that. It's from three, this is the second sentence. Oh, okay. So the, the second sentence that I just read, the concern was that it is, it is not sufficient to address actual results, but they didn't make a recommendation on how to change it. They just highlighted it. This is a thing of concern. And then the word satisfy was also another word that was, um, raised because they felt it was too subjective, which was actually addressed by another group. That's our internal equity and inclusion, um, committee. And they made a recommendation to change satisfy to meet because that is a more finite word. So that was included as well. And then, um, it was taken to the economic advisory board. And the comment there was just, there was a conversation around formerly or former incarceration status. They were concerned about that being included from a safety perspective, but again, there was not a specific, it was just a conversation. And then finally, um, Lance took it to the council's legislative affairs committee and their, their comment was, they felt it needed to be shorter. And so, um, that's what I'm bringing you tonight. I do want to let you know I had a conversation with Brandy, who's not available. And, uh, her comments to me were she, she was fine if we simplify the definition of equity to base, um, so it kind of follow what the council committee was. So it would be equity is the fair and just distribution of opportunities, power, influence and resources to meet the needs of all people, period. But she wants the whole thing retained as recommended by two of the groups that's saying that this should really be a statement of intent. So you're keeping, you're, um, better describing it, but you're keeping the definition itself short. So that, that's what I have for you. I'm ready to answer questions, take more comments. And if I went too fast, I'm happy to repeat. Yes.
Um, the legislative affairs committee, is that definition on paper?
No, their comment was just, it's that, uh, on page, top of page nine, committee thought the definition should be shorter and all captures all members of the community.
And it was, was there one sentence?
Yeah, it would be.
The one that you read?
Yeah, it would be that it's the very first sentence of the planning commission's original definition.
So there would be a definition and there would be some background.
Yeah.
Okay. Rather than make our original, you know, kind of statement, which we said it was a definition, but they wanted to be called a statement in its entirety, just modified it a bit. We shortened it to make a definition. Then we have some, enough background to kind of fill in and overcome the shortness of the definition.
Yeah. And, and the way I see this playing out is the definition would be that one sentence if you are agreeable. And then the, the piece, the three sentences would go into the vision policy statement of the comp plan. So you have, it's, it's now being captured in two different ways.
Hi, Melanie.
Hi, I think my question probably got answered in that last thing that, um, Kate said, because I was just gonna ask that if we were to shorten the definition to the first sentence, um, and then use the, the, the remaining sentences kind of as background, it, how would that show up then? In all of the, all the literature where this appears, um, for the city? Like, I was seeing the comp plan, it'd be defined and then there'd be the background elsewhere. So like, how would, how would it show up and then connect to one another so that both are referenced at all times? And it doesn't, it doesn't go to just the definition with the other part kind of being like an afterthought that's maybe not always referenced. If that makes sense.
Absolutely. And I believe how we've discussed it internally is because in the comp plan document as well as our development code, we have definitions. But in the comp plan, you also have, it used to be the vision statement and that will, um, Imagine Monroe will be replacing that. So it will be basically chapter one or two. So you'll have Imagine Monroe and then this will be another component of it. But the definition will now be both in the comp plan and our development code. So you're keeping both.
I'm, I'm so sorry. The expanded part, the extra three sentences, that'd be in our code as well?
No.
The develop, okay, got it.
It would be part of, this is what we're trying to achieve, just like Imagine Monroe. This is our, this is our overreaching what we idealize of our community.
Right.
And this is how we're trying to apply it.
And then the, I'm sorry, the legislative affairs committee, will you read it off one more time?
Sure.
So it's, it's the one on page seven, that's equity is the fair distribution of opportunities.
Yeah, sorry. So if, and, and this was a common, comment for all of them. They just felt the three sentences was too long. It really feels like a statement of intent.
Yeah, right.
And so the thought was if you leave the definition as equity is the fair and just distribution of opportunities, power, influence and resources to meet the needs of all, of all people, period. And then all three sentences with all the additional descriptors becomes part of our vision statement or the, comes underneath the vision statement in the policy chapter of the comp plan.
And the all three are the three sentences following the first sentence, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry for all the confusing.
No, 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 this, this is why I'm bringing it back to you. And if you don't like that, I mean, your options are no, we're disregarding what we heard. We want to keep our original definition. Or no, we agree with Chisav's edit. Or no, I kind of like the option of having the two pieces together. The one piece, we did not get any feedback on that process and the list of questions. So as you're going through the policy, how are we implementing? How are we getting to the definition and a statement of intent?
Janelle.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, we're good, okay. So just to clarify, probably for like the fourth or fifth time, I just want to make sure that I am hearing this correctly. So what you're, or what is being proposed, Kate, is that we utilize equity is the fair and just distribution of opportunities, power, influence and resources to meet the needs of all people, period.
That is correct.
For the definition.
For the definition only.
So we're not. So we're not including the regardless of life experience, prosperity or background, including but not limited to age, ability, gender and everything else that, that's after it, we're stopping it at all people?
That would be the definition, but you keep the, all three sentences with the descriptors in the policy statement that would go in the comp plan.
And I'm sorry, Janelle, I think you're reading off the Chisav version. I think the one that we're working with is page seven at the top is our, is our working one, right? And then you were saying.
It's Chisav. It's Chisav, sorry.
What is the, the one at the top of setup?
That was the planning commission's original.
Current, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That was the one that I was asking, like, is it this one?
Sorry.
No, no.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay.
Chisav added, staff, I'm not, yeah, staff added and Chisav liked the, and just in that very first, was it words five and six of the first sentence? Got a question.
Oh, Liz.
Sorry, also being redundant. So the other three sentences aren't being lost, they'll still be there just in a different section. Right.
That's, that is correct. So the definition will be the comp plan and the municipal code. The statement of intent will be with the comprehensive plan because that's where all of our policies lie.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. I think we just want to make sure that like, that those specific additional definitions that we're all very passionate about aren't lost. Because it's good.
Yes. So Kate, is this sort of.
We understand the feedback and getting it shorter for that purpose, so thank you.
So is that, is this kind of the, the best of both worlds? Because virtually all the comments were you guys have a statement rather than a definition, you need to shorten it up. But if we shorten it to a definition and then the full background and all of the verbiage we worked on so hard, it's included in the policy statement?
Absolutely. And, and that was, again, it was the common, like, we kept hearing over and over the three sentences is too long. That's not a definition, it's a, it's a statement. But it's very important because as you know, that we spent three meetings getting the wording right. And so we don't want it to be lost. But from the definition standpoint, we wanted it, well, the other groups recommended it be shortened precise. So you get both.
Excellent.
It's just hard to read the Chisav one with the highlights and the underlines. Just to, if, if we were to make a final action.
Yeah.
That was, that would be awesome, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. And, and do you not feel like you have to make a decision tonight? If you, if you want, I can come back with what's being recommended so you can look at it again. So the one sentence and then the statement. If that's helpful.
That would, that would be awesome.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with Jake, that would be awesome if we could do that.
It hurts my eyes reading the underline. No, you were trying to be helpful too, Kate, and it is helpful. It's the, the final draft, yeah.
I should have done that, my, you know, I should have, anyway, we'll do it next meeting.
There's no way that we could, like, bring it up on a Word documents and bring it up on a Word document and we type it out right now and have.
Yeah, it, it's not, it's not time sensitive, so I'm more than happy to come back.
Because I just got grammarly forced on me at work. And so I'm used to the, the software telling you, you guys don't know what you're talking about. Type it this way or make this change. So I'm totally fine with a jumble or whatever. But if they wanted to come back, then that's, that's fine. Melanie.
Yeah, was there a suggestion along the way of what word to maybe replace satisfy with? Because I know there was kind of, it was highlighted and so I'm just curious if there was a suggested change to that. Otherwise, I mean, I, I understand what was going on in that highlighted stuff. I'm good with changing gender preference to sexual orientation with gender, gender identity and sexual orientation. I think that works well there. And the other underlined things that were changed. I, I have no objection to any, any of the underlines that were added. But that satisfies, the word satisfy, that was my one remaining question.
So Melanie, under the diversity and equity folks, they said to use the word meet instead of satisfy to remove the subjective nature.
Totally, I'm so sorry, I probably got said it, it just went over my head for some reason.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Yeah. Kate will be back at the next meeting then. Lena is black and white, no highlighting?
No highlights, no underlining.
No, no strike through.
No.
You're still awesome.
Are there any other questions or comments? Is there anything else that you'd like for me to bring back or just the clean version?
We just go over it all one more time? I'm Jake.
Yes.
I do enjoy dry food, thank you for that.
Jay just popped a blood vessel inside.
A little levity is always created.
Great, thank you.
Unless the planning commission can't see me kicking you in the.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you all for being at the meeting and offering, I quite appreciate all of you being here. And Brandy's comments prior to the meeting too, so. Okay. Thanks for keeping it in line, Kate. Let's go on to, get my.
Page twenty-one.
Spittle one way. Sorry, folks, I got too many pieces. Where are we, Kate?
Page twenty-one, you go down to the bottom, page numbers. It's the CD August report.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. It's a short agenda today.
Okay.
Important, oh, we lost them. No, they're still there, okay. I've got it handled a little bit.
Okay. Better late than never, we've got the August Community Development Monthly Report. So we will start at the top with our project review. It just goes over our archiving project that was a big focus. We started this a long time ago with digitizing a lot of our paper archives and sending them to another company that scanned them all in for us. And yeah, it has made a huge difference in our paper use and storage. The project highlight for the month is the Lakeview Building, which I'm sure you have all seen over there at the edge of Fryland's Boulevard. A hundred and twenty-six thousand square foot concrete tilt-up building. Started with a pre-application meeting in June of 2018, so it's been a long time coming. We had one pre-application meeting in the month of August. It was a three lot short flat proposal dividing one lot into three. Building permits was the same as July for a single family. We had four single families issued and zero commercial TI was issued in August. Moving on to some of our current projects in review. You'll notice the biggest change would be under civil construction. Two of those, the Duval Rio Vista and Cooper Ridge have moved from civil design review over to civil constructions. Work has started on those projects. Two additional new ones under civil construction is Summer Lane at 226 Madison Street, five new residential units. And this Mahomish Regional Fire and Rescue Shop, right here, Station Thirty-One.
It'll be on the backend of this building. So it's the part of the building that's closest to City Hall that helps you.
Are they building us a bigger mini space there?
That's what I was saying, that's why they gave us the building.
Under site plan review, we have two newcomers, a motor vehicle sales lot at twelve hundred West Main Street. It's a modular building on a currently vacant sales lot. And Wendy's at one eight eight zero five State Route Two.
Can I ask questions now?
What's up?
Is it going to be where the Chase Bank is or is it going to be, I mean, the, the design question right now? Or is it going to be in that empty lot behind the gas station?
It is the empty lot behind the gas station.
Got you.
I was hoping for it somewhere.
Yep. So yeah, it'll be there in the Red Meyer parking lot.
Got you.
That's what they're proposing. Beyond that, for code enforcement, our resolved cases is up from a hundred and sixty-two in July, we're up to a hundred and ninety-five resolved in August. So good job, Kevin. Some of our new business license applications from August. Anyone have questions on those? Kate, were there any updates to comp plan, middle housing or annexations?
Yeah, on the annexations, there's no movement. The, just to let you all know, the Connor annexation, when we, they are at the sixty percent petition. Once you have that filled out, this is the one that's owned by a single property owner, you have to send it to St. Homage County Assessor for confirmation on the legal description, a few other things. And the county did not like the legal description. Then it came back a question about does the annexation boundary end at the property? Does it go to the middle of Tester Road? Does it go to the end of Tester Road? So the applicant is working with their engineer to finalize the legal description. And then we would go to the county's boundary review board. So that one is relatively easy compared to North Forty-One. This is the one that is in, thank you, next to the Monroe Woodlands. This is also a citizen initiated or a resident initiated, private property owner initiated application. We did have a conversation with the current applicants and they are having trouble getting enough property owners to sign the sixty percent petition. So kind of waiting to see if it's going to continue or they're going to withdraw the application. For comp plan, fantastic segue, do not miss next meet, next meeting on the twenty-third. We had our first community advisory committee meeting. Jay was there and it was a presentation of the original concepts of the land use scenarios based on what we're trying to achieve for people, housing, jobs, and then all of the comments that we received over the spring last year. The feedback was extremely helpful. We're going back and modifying the maps. In fact, I've got another set waiting for my review tomorrow morning. We will be presenting those to you at your meeting on October twenty-third. And then they will be going to the city council at their regular meeting. This is tentative for council, yours is guaranteed. Council in November, at their November twenty-eighth meeting. And the hope is, we're not asking you to adopt one of the scenarios. We're just looking for, are you okay if we go out to the public and start getting their comments? Because this is a back and forth process. And so you will get to see what the community advisory committee got to see with some refinements. So put the twenty-third on your calendar.
Strongly recommended in person.
Alex will actually be doing this via Zoom, so it doesn't matter. Love to see you in person, but if you want to continue doing online, he will. Our consultant will be doing his presentation online.
That's all I have.
Time for commissioners. Oh, you got one more? So we already talked about the little flyer that you sent to us.
Yeah. So after our last meeting, when we were talking, I think, was Anita there? Oh, my gosh, my memory's going. Anyway, we were talking about housing and Brandy had been down in Tacoma and she found their flyer really helpful and she asked if I could share that with you. So it is included in your pamphlet. I believe there's like a QR code and there's a link to the city of Tacoma. And she was, because we are just getting into middle housing, they are much further along. She thought it might be helpful to see their flyer on how they're doing this communication and what's available on their website. So this is purely for informational purposes.
And Tacoma also has, they're a lot farther along with their multifamily tax exemption as well. So Tacoma has a bunch of great resources, PDFs. If you're looking at, you know, what's possible to make multifamily housing more affordable, Tacoma has some pretty good resources on their website.
Yeah, they have, they have a lot more tools in their toolbox and we actually will be looking at them. Some of their other things are like helping people, or it's, it's their displacement. They have items in their displacement toolbox that we don't have. So if you are interested, it's definitely a good city to look at for ideas.
Start with, go online first for discussion. Janelle?
All right. Um, I don't have anything tonight. As always, I want to say thank you to Kate for all the information you bring to these meetings. I appreciate your dedication and your work. Hannah, you too, you're amazing. And thank you for the link to Tacoma. Because I've been hearing a lot of good things about a lot of their programs and I'm glad that, that you mentioned like the. And I'm glad that, that you mentioned like the displacement and stuff. Because, yeah, yeah, it's, it's, yeah. But anyways, um, so I'll be looking at that. But just thank you for everything, and that's it.
Thanks, Janelle. Liz?
Um, just want to say thanks for all the great presentations and all, I'm sure, extra hard work it's taking to get these meetings running smoothly. I thought of a couple of things. When we're getting feedback from the community, are we getting from them where they live in our community? So are like, we like cross-referencing when everybody's saying, let's build more housing in like, the currently like the Blueberry Lane, southern area where everybody's like, yeah, let's put more housing here. Where are these people living that are saying, put all the housing in this one spot? Or put it over here? Where, where are people coming from? And then also, once, are we getting feedback from the businesses in the surrounding areas too? Because unfortunately, the people that spoke tonight, if anybody's talked with the businesses in that Short and Art Kelsey section, I've heard that a lot, because that's right in my neighborhood. And then two, I don't know if there's a way or how we bridge that gap of, or how exactly we are notifying businesses and everybody of code changes that are major like these. Because there have been some other code changes as a resident that, like we, my HOA has been impacted from kind of some not great notifications ourselves. So I can feel what he was saying on a, on our own level. So I don't know how, what we can help change or if there's stuff in the codes. Because at the same time, it, it puts, I feel like, more pressure and issues on planning staff when they're having to bridge these gaps and stuff. And then, and then I guess my other question is, is their situation similar like what we had with the food bank? And I'm really stretching my memory, how we, like when the food bank was doing their expansion and we approved that, or is it different? Because we're doing a comp plan revision, I guess, kind of an overall question. While we're looking at the bigger picture of everything right now and we're looking at everything, and not just for this one particular business, but while we're looking at all these pieces, what other businesses in some of these other districts are potentially being impacted? Not quite wording this correctly, but you know, it goes to all the questions that we're putting together, like when we're thinking through everything, where, as things come up to change, how are we impacting and displacing businesses, people? It's the same thing. So, sorry, lots of questions.
No, but I'm happy to answer all of them for you. So on the, your first question about who, who commented on where to put things? I'm going to provide you, we have a two-page summary of everyone who we received comments from. Most of the information is from the online survey. And I would say, based on all the data that I have seen, the majority of them are Monroe. They live in Monroe, Monroe residents.
Home down more specifically where in Monroe, like to, to really drill down? Like, I'm curious, are we a good sample of all the area, all the various areas? Or is it like, are we getting pockets like Robin Hood Lane? You know what I mean? Like, are we getting pockets of response areas is my concern?
Sure. So we, so the way we have been advertising and we, the way we've been out in the public, we, we are not going out to specific neighborhoods. So we had the online survey that was there, and we actually had, you put in a pin of where you lived. That was one of the questions. But I cannot tie your address to how you answered. All I know is, these people answered, and most of them lived in Monroe. And then there were some on the outside. And then second part of that is, these are the areas where people were saying, I would like to see more residential, different type of residential, more commercial. Here are issues with your transportation system. So it was, it's a conglomerate of all of that. I cannot tie out where one neighborhood is commenting to another. That makes sense. Okay. And so just for noticing, we did a notice to all addresses in the city of Monroe, trying to let them know about that online survey. So I really feel like we cast a wide net. We went to, what, one, two, three, four, five events over the summer? And this is all summarized in the sheet that I'm going to include in your packet next, in two weeks. So I, I think we have done the best we can. We are going out to the people instead of asking them to come to us. So I'll get you all that information. Your next question about notification. So typically on comprehensive plans, it is a global notice that goes out. It is not site-specific. Like if you had a site-specific rezone, the property proponent is typically the person saying, I want to change my designation. They come to us. But when we're doing comp plan as well as rezone, typically it is a citywide notice. It's in the paper, postcards, like I was mentioning before, on the website. Situations like what the Smith Brothers were talking about. I've had concerns with that before. So Lance and I have talked about, we, if there's a big area that's changing, we would like to send out notices this time around. So in January, when we're out in the public, after the planning commission and the council get to see these land use scenarios, I will, we will, probably Hannah, be sending out postcards, please be advised, the city of Monroe is doing a comp plan update and will follow up with a rezone. Your property may be impacted by this. This is your opportunity to provide comment. So this is different. It's not required. But we're going to go beyond what we've done in the past and what's, it's beyond what's required by law. But it's appropriate. So we're getting there.
But to follow up on that.
Yeah.
So your notification, let's say you, you in person dropped it off at State Roofing. They would toss it in the garbage because they're not the property owner. So how do you get the notification to the property owner?
I can answer that as the one that did it. So the way that I get the mailing list that we use for land use notifications is from the assessor's site. So it's the taxpayer. Yeah, it's whoever owns.
Okay.
And for State Roofing and the Smith Brothers, they actually still have offices on North Kelsey. So they would have gotten it either way, as property owner or to a residential or a business address. And then the last question about the food bank, this is very similar. So the property had been zoned a particular way. The food bank changed, occurred with the 2015 comp plan change, and then it got rezoned in 2019. And this is very, this is almost identical. The difference being is the Smith Brothers property, the designation change was in 1994. I went back and looked because I'm like, oh, well, maybe that was done with the 2015 comp plan. But there, for whatever reason, the city never rezoned that property to match what the city's vision was. We're in an interesting situation now where we really need to find places for jobs. So this might work helpful for you as you're considering the land use scenarios in two weeks. Did I cover everything?
Yes, thank you. That was extremely helpful. I love the idea of preemptively wishing out. I, I know it's immense more work for you guys, but I think extra notification and asking for that feedback. I agree with Commissioner Paul that, you know, a lot of times people are throwing things out. I know James Palmer is notifying businesses and stuff too. So I know EDAB does stuff. I know we get, and I apologize that I'm talking so much tonight. But I know we're getting, the city does a lot, planning does a lot. A lot of our other commissioners or boards and everything is doing a lot. So a lot of the businesses, it's like information overload, kind of like we get from the school district, if anybody has kids in school yet. So we all get inundated, but we, and at the end of the day, we can only do so much. But anyways, thank you. I appreciate everybody's time tonight and all the great discussions. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Moving on to Kelsey.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, cool. I think it would be really interesting to see the pins on the map as well, if we could see that information. Because I think that's a really good point on like where that information is coming from. I don't know if that's like allowed or not. And I want to just thank the people that came in for the public comments. Like displacing businesses is not something that, like we've talked so much about housing. And that's a really good point. And yeah, and thank you staff for everything you do. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelsey. Melanie?
Um, no further comments from me tonight. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Melanie. Jacob?
A lot to say tonight, and I'm sorry.
He's got notes, folks.
I do, I do. And Kate, you can, you can respond to most of this by email. First off, I just, I also wanted to echo, I appreciate your guys' time and all the work that you put into the equity thing. I know we made it a real headache for you, so thank you. The other thing I was going to say is, in your guys' move to the scanning, the documents process, the Monroe Historic Society presented the picture that was found behind the safe the other day. That was the coolest thing. It was a, not a painting, but a picture of, I want to say, 1926 football team from, did they call it Union High School? Had a different name back then, but it, it's so cool. And I recommend you check it out because it was found behind the safe. And he, whoever presented it, I don't know if it was Zach Humphries or another person from the city, said that no one knew it had been back there. So anyways, that was cool. In this season right now, I'm getting a lot of citizen feedback. So I'm just going to kind of go down the list of some of the things I've heard recently. Starting with the one more interesting takes I've heard recently, or not interesting, but one that makes you think, had a gentleman bring up the fact that our main street has no trees? I thought that was really interesting. Brought up the idea that it feels very like open, like it's missing something, and pointed out that it might be that we're one of the few main streets that doesn't have trees. So I, I thought that was a really good point. So I don't know if that's something that we would ever consider when it comes to the green aspect of the comp plan that's coming up and climate. And moving on, I got some interesting feedback from the Woodlands neighborhood. Obviously, since, were they annexed two years ago?
That was beginning of 22, just before it started.
Perfect. There were a couple of people that were on septic, didn't go to sewer. Who were talking about still having to pay the stormwater tax. Is that a thing?
Yes, but septic is different than storm. Stormwater and septic are two different.
Got it, okay.
Utilities.
They were mentioning something about the drainage system that they had put in, not related to the septic. Anyway, so I was going to ask with annexations, what kind of conversations go on in a, in a big one like that when you get the 60% with that many houses between the city and the residents that are going to be annexed and when it comes to all those issues, new taxes? There were a couple that were concerned about. And I know that this, this doesn't have anything to, or not, doesn't, it's not the city's designation, but that they are still in the Snohomish School District, but in the Monroe city limits. So I, I would just love to hear from you, just for future knowledge, when it comes to annexations, on what that kind of process is like if I was a resident being annexed in. Next is when it comes to the comprehensive plan, like Liz was saying, some of the most common feedback you hear from residents and from businesses is that they wish that they had been a part of the conversation. And I know that, that we try really hard and we send things out. But I think that with this comprehensive plan, it would be awesome if, and I think it's incumbent upon us as planning commissioners and on the city council to toe our line and think through ways that we could do a better job getting their feedback beyond just mailers, especially when it comes to these situations like the Smith Brothers. We hear those, those same kind of, especially at city council, those public comments are more common. Last week, it was the, let's see, the tractor, Town and Country, the tractor business that's across from Dick's Tire House. Similar situation. And then obviously, we had the Arcade that came and talked to us, and then the food bank. And so what I was going to say is, as planning commissioners, when we're working on the comp plan and we're doing a rezone of areas like that that have a limited number of businesses and very impactful businesses especially, I think there's, there's few enough that we should make a concerted effort to talk to them in person. And honestly, I, I would want to propose that planning commissioners do get paid by the, the city and taxpayers. So it'd be kind of cool if some of us took it upon ourselves to, to talk to them. There's only so many businesses in those areas that might be getting rezoned. But I think that it's something that could be accomplished to get in-person feedback. Because then we talk to you directly. You didn't just miss the postcard. So I can keep going. But last two things are, I, I think we should make a priority with this comprehensive plan to add crossing lights on Frylands Boulevard. The most common conversation in the Frylands is that we're not going to understand the need to do something to help with crossings of all the families and kids there until something horrible happens. You hear that all the time throughout the years, and I just think we've got to act on it. Because that's, that's the truth, is until something bad happens, we're not going to feel the urgency. But there's not even crosswalks painted in, in some areas that are high traffic. And then lastly, the Sam Street, Powell Street, all of those streets to both the west and the east of Lewis Street get just tattered by traffic every single day, both in the morning and the afternoon. And all of them have exhausted themselves talking to the city about it and the police department. And then obviously, both the city and the police department have tried and used their resources to mitigate what's already happening. But again, I'd love to see us as planning commissioners try to get more creative with some kind of long-term planning for traffic relief when it comes to Lewis Street. That's not going to get better. And, and those people, that's their neighborhood. It's right in front of their house. And it's something we've got to work on because they don't have, besides Liz, there's not much representation from the old Monroe area. And so I just wanted to voice that. And anyways, thanks for all your time. I just, the citizen feedback part is, is awesome. And then thank you to the, the Smith Brothers and Mr. Lyon for speaking their piece. They spoke with council last week too, and they brought up the fact that that's their retirement. And so that's something that we should consider. And I'll cut it off there. But thank you, guys.
Liz, you had something to interject?
I was just going to say Commissioner Blair does live closer to Lewis Street.
Right. Yeah, she does. Yeah.
I was going to say, but I will say, I mean, and just food for thought, I think we should be cautious. North Kelsey could become Lewis Street if we are not careful. So I, I really want to caution planning commissions. We need to plan. We have a train that runs through the middle of our town. And the reason I constantly bring it up, and I, I realize I came from a town of 300,000 people. It was a town of 300,000 people, yes, with a major university, with a train that ran through the middle of it. If you do not plan appropriately, it makes your town worse. If you do not plan appropriately, it makes your town worse. If you plan correctly, it flows, it flows well. But you really have to consider the train, the growth. So let's be considerate and the, the the feedback of people living in the areas is huge and vital. Um, and I think we need to make sure we are listening to our neighbors, to our businesses. Um, otherwise we lose our businesses and we lose jobs. Yes, they eventually get replaced, but it's, it hurts the local economy. It hurts the locals. So that's not what we want. Just my two cents. I am also a small business owner, as are some other people around here. So I, very much that's my passion. So thank you.
Thanks, Melanie. Okay, I'm sorry. Um, all of those conversations the last week has made me kind of appreciate also the idea that as a planning commission, um, it's not just city design and layout and, and flow. Um, but it's, a lot of this involves public safety, especially in the long term, whether it come, or whether it relates to emergency services, being able to get places or, uh, congestion leading to, uh, higher risk situations for pedestrians. So just, uh, food for thought when it comes to kind of the, some of the seriousness of, of some of these items.
All right. I just wanted to say thanks to staff. Thanks to Snohomish County Regional Fire for allowing us to have a home. Appreciate it. Thanks, everyone.
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
Hold on.
Oh, wait, sorry. I didn't know if we were there yet or not. Sorry.
Oh, what? It went, I'm sorry. It was just a bit of a pause as I get, um, comments from staff. I would just want to, just to all reflect and.
No comments for you. I'm just kidding.
Oh my goodness. Um, I only have, uh, well, I have a couple of comments. I will definitely get back to Jake and some of these things I will include, um, in the planning commission packet, because some of it's just basic educational information, uh, especially on annexation process. It's something that the planning commission does not see. So I'm more than happy to provide you input, um, on, and a couple of the others, like the, the comments about transporta- or, um, safety on Frylands Boulevard. Double check your capital improvement plan, your transportation improvement plan. Those are things that would include that information. And guess what? They're coming to you. We're updating the transportation plan this year. So, um, you've got opportunities to touch feel, um, most likely. Uh, it'll, it's going to be after the first year. Um, but we also have exciting news. If you have not seen the Facebook webpage and you didn't see last week's Friday announcement, we finally have an interactive development review map on the city's website. So, um, how do, how do they, is it, what's the quickest way, do you know, to access it? I think you can do, I'll figure out what the, I'll send you a link. Um, it's so, the way this thing works is for, it will have anything, doesn't have everything. For example, it will not have a pre-application, because there's no certainty that that becomes an actual project. It will have all of the stages of a plat or short plat, so preliminary, final. Uh, it will include the major, uh, commercial improvement projects that we get, we call them TIs, but, um, that would not be the Wendy's. That is a site plan. So you would see that automatically, but across the street. Let me click on the blue one, just blow it. Yeah. So you click on it and it'll give you the parcel. And then it will give you what the project is, who the app or who the planner is. And that, that's the IHOP one. So it, it doesn't actually require a process that would be a land use application outside of a building permit, but because we get so many inquiries, we decided that some of these big ones are important enough to make the map. Yeah. So.
And, and if you were to move west, over to 179th, little green.
Let's go out.
So, see that green? So is that going to tell me why the developer has taken over three years to do that? Is there little notes in there like you do?
No.
But it does give you the contact information for the project planner.
We actually do have an update on that one. Um, I believe they're getting close to, uh, the infrastructure being done so they could come in for final flat. That's actually a subdivision. Yeah. Um, and if you go to GIS dot Monroe Wa dot G O B, that's actually where you can get to, um, the zoning map, um, utility map, our comprehensive plan map. Um, F, and it's where the Monroe development map lives as well. And that's what our new interactive map is. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's long looking, yeah.
And if you forget that, if you type maps into the search bar on the city website, it'll take you there too.
That's what I do, Melanie. Um, okay. And then, um, oh, uh, important on, are we going to do the joint meeting? No, nevermind. We have an all hands on deck meeting on October 30th. Um, city council, planning commission, parks board, EDAB, CHAB. I forgot all of them. Parks board. I think I got all of them. Um, this was a, uh, request by the city administrator. So you've already been through this. You will, it's a repeat, but it's a refresher on GMA 101, why are we doing the comp plan and all of the regulatory requirements we have to get through. Um, there's been some concern that we haven't been articulating that enough. So included in that packet will be the actual checklist that we have to fill out showing how we're compliant with this amendment cycle. So that is on October 30th, and I'll be working with, uh, Hannah pretty quickly to get that on your calendars if we haven't done it already. That's not a normal meeting for you, but it is on a Monday night.
So is it a virtual?
It will be like we do. Yeah. Virtual, in-person. And where, where do we have it?
Wagner.
I'll have to ask, I'll have to ask Jody, um, the city clerk. She, she's the one that's organizing it. I'm not sure where.
Can accommodate that many?
I think it might actually be in the, um, coordination center, where we had our last, where we had the CAC meeting. The city's building behind the police department. Yeah, can you put down a, make a note for that?
Seven PM start time.
Seven PM start time. That's everything for me.
Yeah, it's not on the calendar yet, just so you guys know. Like, there's nothing on the October 30th on the main calendar.
You know Hannah, we'll send an email on Friday. I always check, on Saturday, I always check for that Hannah email.
Calendar, that goes off on Fridays, so I'm going to put it in my calendar now.
Yeah. Well, we'll get confirmation from Jody tomorrow.
Thank you.
I don't have anything. Happy fall, y'all. It's finally here.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. Melanie?
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
Second? Second from Jake. Paul Favor, please say aye.
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 Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.